So, our focus today is abide and obey. And also included is a daily discipline. And we've basically have talked about all of this, so this is gonna be like a review. And so, the definition of abide, I always thought of it as hanging out with Jesus. As Him being my best friend, my confidant, and somebody that I can say, "Okay, is this okay? What do you think about that? You know, should I go here? Or should I do that? Or what do you think?" So, that's my personal definition of abiding. The verb abide has several meanings depending on the context in which it's used. It can mean to follow rules, tolerate something, remain in a condition, or live in a place depending on the context. Somebody wanna read number one?
To comply with or adhere to. This means following rules, laws, or instructions. For example, we must all abide by the company's policies.
Right. Somebody will read two?
In this sentence...
In this sentence.
Abide?
Abide.
Abide means to put up with something unpleasant. Unpleasant or difficult. For example, I cannot abide loud music when trying to work.
To remain or continue, this usage applies staying in a particular state or condition. For example, abide in my love or in His mercy memory. Will abide in our hearts.
Somebody wanna read four?
Although most common, abide means to reside or live somewhere. For example, they chose to abide in a peaceful village.
Okay. I just wanna show a real short video. I just read number four.
Letting God come in and live inside you like you would come and live inside my house. You know, to come and live there. He used to take a residency. Put down rules.
Okay, I hope I got this volume down. I guess we'll find out.
Obviously, I will put that up.
That means two of us.
I keep forgetting which button is the...
The first two buttons on the right. You're getting good at this, don't you?
Hello, Angela. I'm looking at John 15, starting in verse 5 where Jesus says, "I am the vine, you are the branches; he who abides in me, and I am him, he bears much fruit." And then in verse 7, "If you abide in me, and my words abide in you, he shall ask what you will, and it shall be done." I'm just gonna ask you, what is involved? What is our part and what is involved in abiding in Him?
Okay, sounds good, Lenny. Appreciate your call tonight. Well, you know, unfortunately, some translate this as remain, and then it sounds like an effort. And then we've got the translation abide. And some people have made that into an effort. But that's not really what's going on here. It's really about location. It's about being in Christ. And I don't know about you, it seems like you abide in New York. You don't wake up every day, Lenny, and go, "Gosh, I gotta try to abide in New York." You just live there. It's your location. So, let me read that with that in mind. I'll read the passage, "I am the vine, you are the branches; he who lives in me, and I am him, he bears much fruit; for apart from me, you can do nothing." See, that's a believer versus an unbeliever. Let me read it again. The believer comes first, and the unbeliever comes second. Whoever lives in me, okay, that's a Christian. And I live in Him, then that person will bear much fruit. Okay, that's a Christian. A Christian has Christ living in them, and they are living in Christ. I am them, and them am I. So, that's a believer. And then it says, "Because apart from me," that would be an unbeliever, because believers are never apart from Him. "Apart from me, you can do nothing." So, look how we've twisted this thing. I mean, here Jesus is contrasting a believer with an unbeliever. And then we've turned this into some sort of work that we need to do every day. Gotta try to abide. Try to abide. Am I abiding enough? And we've made it into a synonym for trusting or dependency. But that's not how it's used in the New Testament. Abide means to live. I abide in Texas. I don't have to try to abide in Texas. I don't make an effort to abide in Texas. I just live here. Likewise, that's what abide means in John 15. And in 1 John, by the way, when it appears there as well throughout the New Testament, abide means live. So, "I am the vine, you are the branches; he who lives in me, and I am him, he bears much fruit; for apart from me, you can do nothing." Now, verse 6. If anyone does not abide, does not live in me, what happens to them? Ouch. Thrown away, gathered, cast into a fire, burned. Ouch. Is that a Christian? No. That is a person that does not live in Jesus. If anyone does not abide in me, they're burned. So, can you see how wrong we have been teaching this passage to be about a Christian who better be trusting Jesus? Now, I love trusting Jesus, but that's not what this passage is about. This passage is about salvation. Either you live in Christ or you don't live in Christ. If you don't live in Christ, then you're apart from Christ, and you can't bear any fruit, zero, zilch. And you're like a branch that is burned. But if you do live in Christ, then you do bear much fruit because, why? Well, He began this work in you, carries it on to completion. He causes you to do and want of His good pleasure. So, you're gonna bear fruit. And then He goes on, He says, "If you live in me, and if my words live in you, ask whatever you wish, it'll be done for you. My Father is glorified by this that you bear much fruit." So, what's He talking about? Should I just ask for a Ferrari and add on in Jesus' name? Do I ask for a multi-million dollar mansion and then add Jesus' name? No. He's talking about bearing fruit. I mean, the very next verse, it says, "My Father is glorified by this that you bear much fruit." So, in other words, "Father, here's my prayer. I know that Jesus is in me, and I know that I'm in Him, and I wanna bear fruit today. And you know what? I've been blowing up at my boss, or I've been blowing up at my kids, or I've been reacting this way and that way and the other way. And I'm so tired of it. I want you to teach me. I want you to mold me. I want you to shape me. I want you to invest in me. I'm looking to you today. You are the living Lord Jesus Christ. You reside in me for a reason. I've been given your life so that you can motivate and animate and inspire me from within. And so, I'm asking today, Father, I'm asking for wisdom from you and counsel and discernment from you." And that's what He's talking about, asking in His name. So, Lenny, I hope that helps. Reach out to us anytime.
I'd like to strongly disagree with him. If I were to be living in New York, abiding in New York, that would take a great effort.
For sure.
That scripture that he was reading, what was it, John what?
15.
I believe he was in John 15. I don't know the exact verse. So, when I came across that video, I thought that was the most different video than I had ever observed on this subject. But I liked it. I thought it was pretty good.
I like the abide part.
Any comments?
Yeah, I like the abide part. You know, I never really thought about the word abiding meaning that, but it does. It means living in Jesus, you know. And, you know, when we live in a town, we live here. So, if Jesus is our Lord and Savior, we should be living in Him and He living in us, you know, so.
You know... I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, it was good.
No, I was just thinking, when I first got saved, I wasn't really taught that. It was something I had to learn along the way, what that really meant. And when they, you know, when you become born again, Jesus is supposed to be living in you, right?
Yes.
And I used to think, when I used to smoke cigarettes, I used to think, "Okay, well, if Jesus is living in me, am I smoking Him out?" You know? You know, the smoke on him? Those kind of things. And, you know, and then for people that do drugs, if you're doing drugs and Jesus lives in you, is Jesus getting high? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I started thinking about that. I said, "That's not good." And so, I guess we have to have to... However, the Holy Spirit gives it to you, but that's how it gave to me. And I said, "Oh, I gotta quit smoking, 'cause I can't. Jesus can't be inhaling this stuff."
And that's the point. You know, as we, when we become believers, God starts to change us. He starts to clean us up. He starts to remold us in Me, 'cause we become His image in a process. It's not like, boom, we're different. And sometimes we can be.
Yeah.
But in the general sense, we're in progress the whole time. We're always to be changing, always to be growing, always to becoming more and more like Him. And that's the, that's the whole deal. You know, we're always becoming better and more...
Yeah, this is the sanctification process. Okay, so now, let's talk about obey. And I think we, you know, we had a really good conversation the last time we talked about this. It means to comply. Well, before we go into obey, let's talk about abide. So, how many of us in here are focusing in on abiding with Christ daily? And if you are, what are some of the obstacles that you come up against?
Distractions.
That's it.
Yes.
This morning, I was saying that to the Lord. Why am I so distracted?
Can you give us an example of a distraction?
Well, text message, a phone, something you have to do before you can leave the house. Oh, I didn't curl my hair. One thing after the other. Get those clothes out of the dryer before you need to iron them. It's one thing after the other that pops into your head, or to my head, to do.
With me, I'm sitting down, doing what I have to do, my regular routine. Once I get up, boom, the phone rings. I'm sitting right there, the phone doesn't ring. Once I get up, boy, it rings and it rings and it rings. Or when I'm, or when I'm even reading my workbook.
Your devotion, doing your devotion habits?
Uh-huh. It's reading and reading. So, I shut it off. I started learning to shut it off. There you go. Because it is so annoying that, yeah.
Anybody else have their problem?
Something number one. I don't have it as much as I did, because most of you know my folks passed away. But it was family distractions. You know, obligations, I should say, not distractions. But, you know, you get all these obligations, and then you don't turn around and feed yourself. You know, and I'm not talking about physical food. I'm talking about spiritual food. But, you know, it's just everything that's going on in this world. We can get, thinking about everything that's going on in the world, and you sit down to read your Bible, and you're thinking about Israel and everything else, you know, and you just, it's like, "Lord, just let me focus. Let me just have this quiet time where I can just get into you." And it's hard in the world that we're living in right now. You know, all of you remember the movie that Priscilla Shire did about the prayer room, the war room? I don't have a room I can do that with, but I think that's important.
You live by yourself? You live by yourself?
I do, but my closets are full, so. You know that situation, don't you?
You know, remember though, what, I think it was John Wesley's wife used to do. They had a lot of kids. She just put her apron over her head.
She did what?
She put her apron over her head. And the kids knew she was in her prayer room.
You know, they lived in a one-room house.
I think the secret she had was blocking the images from her eyes as well. I was sitting at my table this morning saying to the Lord this. I'm looking at this pile of medical stuff that I've got going in front of me. You know, if it isn't Peter's, it's mine. And I'm like, "Okay, I gotta close this up. I gotta, can't see it. I've got my Bible on a stand in front of me, so I can't see it." And it still creeps out around the edges. And I'm like, "Lord, the distraction is just so bad. I need focus." And as I asked Him for the focus, then I was able to kind of hone in on what I was reading, and that was helpful.
I think about people that are in leadership in our church, and I know that this one and her husband, they've got obligations that, I mean, where do you get the time to feed yourself? You know, because I know they're always on the run. Joanne says, "Well, we live in our cars." Well, that's true, because they're always going to the hospital, they're going to make a visit, they're going, you know, whatever they're doing, you know. And I thought, if we could just find that quiet time. You know, I think that one reason that it's so easy to preach salvation to third-world countries is because they don't have all this. You know, they don't have the computers, they don't have the TVs, they don't have the phones, they don't have, you know, they don't have all the distractions, you know, that we do. And I think that we just need to calm down and just find ourselves again, you know. Whether it's in your bedroom where it's really dark or whatever. I can do that in my bedroom, and Taylor doesn't talk to me too much, so that's my difference. But we just need to make that time, you know, even if it's just a half an hour. Just to feed ourselves, whether it's in prayer, whether it's reading the Scripture, whether it's, you know, but I, it's just, it's so important, because if we don't, we can't grow, you know, spiritually, so.
I have something to say. So, I agree with you ladies, but I find myself, sometimes I have a lot of time, a lot of time. And I don't want to, because, and when I say I don't want to, it's not that I don't have the desire, but when everything is in front of me, it's so overwhelming, because there's so much in the Word. And I don't know where to get started. And it's like I need a tool or a guide. I need something to remain focused. It's so much topics and so much, so much that's going on in the world. I'm like, "Well, Lord, what am I supposed to do with this?" Because we think, some people think, that we're supposed to tackle it all. But God has given us a divine assignment. We've gone through prerequisites in our life. And whatever that prerequisite that you've gone through in your life, whether it's motherhood, being a surrogate mother, gone through addictions, we have to be focused on what our prerequisite or what our life's journey has been like, and ask God to reveal that. So, for me, how I combat that for the most part, and I'm not, I'm not perfect, but I love being on the road. So, I ask God, I said, "Lord, I want a van." And I was like, "I don't know how I'm gonna get this van." I was like, "Lord, I don't know what you gonna do." Because I gotta work on my credit, and I work on my credit, and I got my van. So, when I'm in my van, it's David Wilkerson, it's John Ottenberg, it's all these great, it's some Haggy going on up in there, it's some spiritual warfare going on up in there, it's my praise music. It's so, so... But when I'm somewhere else, I'm, I am distracted. It's like, "Okay, Lord, now, when I see you, I've already prayed to you that I'm distracted, and I'm having issues. I can't do it on my own," you know. But when I'm driving, that's where I, that's where my, my study is. Because I, I'm busy, not, you know, I like, but to sit here and just do this, I'm like... But to drive in the desert, in the wilderness, and up under the, you know, the stars and seeing His masterpiece, now, that is a wow.
That's a blessing.
I do that. That's your favorite. When my husb, my first husband was born, he goes, "The academy for the police department in Tucson. We lived in Coolidge. And I would drive back and forth about that desert highway. And I had, I had, I did that same thing. I'm here with you." Praising God. I had my music, I had my, my Christian radio. David Jeremiah was playing or something at that late at night. And I'm just toadling and drowning. I've got a six-month-old sitting next to me, and she's sleeping away, and the dog's on the floor sleeping away, and I'm just... I'm there. I can feel that. So, I remember, yeah, that was good times.
I just, I just wanna interject this. So, at some point, all of us have some kind of distraction. So, in our prayer time, and most of us know what our distractions are. So, in our prayer time, we can present that to the Lord. This is our, my distraction. How do I get around this? That's something that we can ask the Lord. How do we get around that? So, we need to have a plan. When I quit smoking, I had a plan. The Lord said, "You gotta make a plan." So, if you get out of the bed on the right side, don't get out on that side anymore. Get out on the left side, 'cause everything that you do from this point on is gonna have to be in opposite. You're gonna have to replace it with a positive. So, if you get up in the morning and you drink a cup of coffee, and that cup of coffee gives you the urge to wanna have a cigarette, don't drink coffee. Drink orange juice, or drink something else. Don't drink that, because that causes you to wanna have a cigarette. So, I started to put a strategy together, how I was gonna quit smoking. It took me two years, finally. But we all have to have a strategy of how to break the very thing that the enemy is trying to prevent us from doing. So, we have to be deliberate. Deliberate means you got a plan, and you stick with the plan. Because the ultimate plan is for us to spend some time with the Lord so He can speak to us. 'Cause He already said, "You can't do anything without me." So, He's gotta be first, because He's gonna direct us for the rest of the day. So, if He's gonna direct us for the rest of the day, we have to spend some time with Him. And the only way you can spend time with Him and know that it's Him and not the enemy speaking to you is through His Word. And that's the one thing He wants to keep you from, is the Word and from praying. So, if He can do that, He's successful. So, I say, "Be deliberate. You pray about your distractions. Ask the Lord to get these distractions away." And then you have to be radical about it. So, if the phone is ringing, and you know the phone is gonna ring it, everybody should have, "Do not disturb." Or just cut the doggone thing completely off. Just cut the thing completely off. Okay, so, for me, I'm not a morning person, but because I used to have to be at work at 7:00 a.m., my body is still getting me up early. Still get up early. So, I was just blowing time off, and I'm thinking, "I'm just blowing this little time off. I need to make the morning my time for me, because it jumpstarts my day." So, I'm up early. And I'm usually, where my desk is, is kind of in the open. So, anybody walking through the house would be a distraction. So, I would always try to get up early before everybody else. And that's how I would start. Even if it's 15 minutes a day, just be consistent with it. Be consistent with it. But you gotta be deliberate, and you gotta know what the obstacles are. And then you gotta battle the obstacles. So, if it's the phone, cut it off. If you live in a house with other people, look, you're gonna start this regimen. And don't bother me during this time, because this is my quiet time every day. You gotta let people, if you live in the same house. Am I right, Amber? Amber has 10 brothers and sisters. And they managed to get it done, so. You wanna share some secrets with us? How you doing?
For a long time, we all shared a room with someone. Like Alyssa and I shared a room for 16 years, and then obviously Lyssa and so on. But during that time, if Alyssa was in the bedroom having her quiet time, I sat in the closet. We would switch. Or if we were both actually able to keep our mouths shut and study in the same room, we'd try that, but we ended up chatting too much, so. You know, one person's, you know, our parents let them, us use their room. We wanted to sit in there with them and study in the kitchen. So, just move around, sit on the porch.
So, you gotta find your spot.
Yeah, just find a spot.
So, what about if somebody comes up to you, "Hey, hey, hey, hey." What do you say?
If it's important, you go, "Okay, what is it?" And they explain, "Well, that's not important right now. If you can wait, then we ask you to wait. If you can't wait, then..."
So, if you live in a house with other people, they need to know what you're doing. That might, that might get them doing it too. And if they see that you're consistent with it, like, "What are you reading?" They'll start questioning you about it. So, that, to me, is the enemy at work at whichever means necessary. So, if he can distract you with stuff like the telephone, the television, the radio, just cut everything off. And you'll find that if you're consistent every day, even if you start off just 15 minutes a day, and then increase it as you see, 'cause it'll become a habit after a while. What is it, 30 days makes a habit? So, you gotta start somewhere, and just know that it's just not a coincidence that you get interrupted. It's a strategy that Satan uses to keep you from getting what God wants you to have.
Valerie? Not rarely, but quite often, I have to tell him to shut up.
Yeah.
'Cause I know what it is. I know what's going on, you know, when you become flooded with all these things. Just tell him to shut up and get out of here.
So, sometimes it's gonna call for you. You know, when you first get started, it's gonna probably be a little rough. Because if you're used to getting up at 7:00 or 8:00 every day, get up a half an hour earlier. You gotta be deliberate, and you gotta be focused. You can get your stuff prepared the night before, get your Bible there, get your notes. Whatever tools you're gonna use, just have it there the night before. When you wake up that morning, don't cut nothing on. Go straight there. Spend your little time. I used to put a timer on, so when it goes off. Then it got to the point where I got sick of the timer, 'cause I wasn't through doing what I wanted to do, studying what I wanted to study, you know. But you gotta be deliberate, and you have to be focused, and you have to be prayer. Ask the Lord to show you your distractions. If you're not a person, 'cause my daughter says she doesn't like just to sit there with a piece of paper. It's boring. Yeah, that's boring. It can get really boring. And so, me, I had a little praise and worship music. That's the first thing I cut on. I cut the praise and worship music on, and then I have it like in the background. And then, you know, I pray, and then I go, you know, into it. One day it might go this way, another day it might go that way. So, you gotta do what works for you. But you gotta get it going. The, you gotta jumpstart it. That's gonna be the hardest. Okay, so now that we dealt with abide, let's go to obey. So, we talked about this as well. The verb obey means to comply with the command, direction, or request of a person or an authority. This implies following orders or instructions given by someone in a position of authority. For example, the soldiers must obey their commander. So, somebody wanna read number two?
To comply or follow a law, rule, or regulation, this improves... Adhering to the rules or laws. For example, citizens are expected to obey the law.
To submit, to submit authority is the sense of highlights, re...
Recognizing.
Recognizing and submitting to someone's control or authority. For example, children should obey their parents.
And so, obedience is the proper response to people. Read this later. It's giving you the Hebrew verb for obedience, and that's just for your information. And then, to abide and obey is actually to surrender. You gotta surrender. Just like if somebody was being robbed and with a gun... Just like if, if, if somebody was being robbed and with a gun, you just throw your hands up. Okay, whatever you want, take it. No, we gotta be like that with the Lord. Whatever you want from me, God, just show me. Uh, surrendering to the Lord is a profoundly personal and it's a spiritual process that varies according to individual beliefs, religion, traditions, and personal experiences. And we all have different backgrounds, where we came from and what we believed in. And these are just some general steps that might help guide you through the process. Number one is to seek understanding and knowledge. The Bible says, "All by getting, get an understanding." So if there's something in the scripture that you don't understand. I had a Bible study in my house last Thursday. And it was with my daughter, her fiance, and the pastor, this white that lives across the street from me. They've been kinda doing some marital counseling. And so they were doing it in my living room. And we were just talking about getting an understanding, you know, of the Word and standing in the Word. You know, what it means to be saved and those type of things. So you need to get an understanding. And Bible study is great. We're, we're all in the right place right now. So we need to study the Bible in order to get an understanding of who God is. Because the Bible says that we can have the mind of Christ. You can't have the mind of Christ without reading his word. That's the only way you can get his. To have the mind of Christ means to think like him, to understand what he's saying and to understand his will for our life and the direction that we should be going. You don't even, you're like a lost person without a map if you don't know what his plan is for your life. So, um, number one says, "Seek understanding and the knowledge. Study the Bible, engage in Bible studies, attend services, and participate in community worship." And in Proverbs 3:13 to 14, it says, "Blessed are those who find wisdom, those who gain understanding, for she is more profitable than silver and yields better return than gold." Now, if you think about that, everybody knows how valuable gold is, right? But they're saying, uh, wisdom is, is better than that. It says, "Understanding is depicted as exceedingly valuable and beneficial." Now you understand why Satan don't want you to get into the Word again?
Well, Solomon asked for one thing and that was wisdom.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So number two is prayer and meditation. Somebody wanna read that?
Spend prayer speaking to the Lord, expressing your desires to surrender. Practice meditation to quiet your mind and create space to connect with the Lord.
So surrender is probably gonna be one of the most scariest things for a new Christian. Because that means, that means that you gotta let go of your agenda and your plans and ask the Lord, "What do you want me to do?" Because I got my own plans. I know what I wanna do and I wanna do it this way. And I'm gonna start this way. But what if that's not the way God intended for you? And he says, "No, put that to the side. This is what I want you to do." And he will start to show you the direction that he wants you to go. And the scary part is sometimes he'll even give you a mini video clip of what you would do sometime in the future. And you're like, "Oh, no. Why did I even get that vision? Oh, no." Because I never saw myself teaching. If you had told me that I'd be doing this, what, 30 years ago? I would've like, "Oh, no." So as he equips you, just like she said, he equips you, there's prerequisites. Everything that has happened in your life, he's preparing you for what he wants you to do. And a lot of times you might say, "Well, I can't do that. I don't know how to do that." But when you become born again, he starts giving you gifts that you never had before. Not a talent. I'm not talking about a talent. Some people have talent to sing. I'm talking about a gift that you didn't have before and you have it now because you surrendered. So if you surrender to him and you hear his voice and he's leading you in a certain way, like to just forget about your fear of praying in front of people and just start praying. The more you do it, the more you're gonna get it. And so that's walking and obedience.
Exactly.
Okay? So that's anything that you have fear of doing. All, I had fear. And I read that book by John McDever, I think his name is. About breaking intimidation. I don't know if you guys, I think I told you about it. It's, the book cover, I was in the Christian bookstore and I saw this, this crowd of people. And it was like, like in cartoon form. And it was this little bitty man walking through the crowd and he was like shocked. And it said, "Breaking intimidation." And I knew that book was for me. And I went up to him and I picked it up and I said, "I need this book." And so when I read it, it helped, it gave me confidence. I'm like, you know, other people are just like me. They go do the same thing just like me. I'm no different. Why can't I do this? And I started talking to the Lord about it. I said, "Look, I don't see myself doing this. I can't even imagine doing this." And then I would read this and it would talk about other people in the scripture. You know, Moses had a, a speech impediment. You know, all these people, but.
He stuttered.
But God, but they did the will of God. You know? So, um, we have to get over that. We have to get over ourselves. We trip over ourselves to do what the Lord wants us to do. If we just move ourselves out of the way and say, "Okay, now here I am, Lord. What do you want me to do?" And he was slowly but surely started giving you little instructions. And sometimes the instructions are easy and some of them are like, "You got to tune this a minute." You know? I kept, "Wait, Lord, let me, let me think about this. Let me think about it." And that's, that's how he's worked with me. And so we have to pray and ask him to help us break whatever intimid, that's intimidating us from finishing the race or from going forward. A lot of us are frozen. We can't go any further because the enemy has intimidated us. So we can pray about that before we leave, whatever the enemy has put before you that's stopping you from moving forward. Somebody wanna read, uh, number three?
Repentance and forgiveness. Reflect on your life, acknowledge your mistakes and sins, and ask God, and ask for forgiveness. If we will confess our sins, he is faithful and righteous so that we, he will forgive us our sins and cleanse us with all unrighteousness. 1 John 1:9.
Okay. So, you know, we, we can confess our sins every afternoon. Sometimes we sin, we don't even realize we sin.
I do it every day.
Yeah, the mornings. Good. Okay, so forgive others and let go of any grudges or bitterness that you might hold. Uh, Matthew 6:14 to 15 says, "For if you forgive other people when they sin against you, uh, your heavenly Father will also forgive you. But if you don't forgive others of their sins, your Father will not forgive your sins."
That one is my favorite one.
It's thought provoking, isn't it?
It's, it's, it, it, it's powerful to me. Because if, if, if you hold grudges with, with a, a person, it's not, it's not, it's not good for you. But if, 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 if you don't forgive that person, God won't forgive you. And that is in my, that's my rule. That one right there.
That was one of my biggest truths. Because I start, I start reflecting, okay, if you forgive other people, they sin against you, your heavenly Father will forgive you. Now, I'm a new Christian readings, right? But if you don't forgive others of their sin, your Father won't forgive you of yours.
That's right.
And I'm thinking, okay, can I get in heaven without being forgiven? You know, I start thinking like that. And I'm thinking, this is serious.
It is serious and I take it very seriously. I really do.
So if you have, uh, and even having an awe against your brother or your sister. In the scripture, it says, "If you have an awe against your brothers, sisters, keep your gift." He don't even want your money. He said, "No, leave that alone and go back and ask for forgiveness and get a relationship. Then come back." So if you're tired and you got some unforgiveness in your heart, that don't mean nothing. God care less about what you're getting.
But that doesn't mean you have to be buddy buddies with that, that person. You can forgive someone.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Yeah, that's a whole nother stuff.
Right, I just have to throw that out.
That's good, Valerie, I like that.
Any more comments?
Unforgiveness causes bitterness and bitterness rots your, from the core of your being, from your bones to, to the outside. It comes out as putrid as it is inside. And when you hold, hold unforgiveness of, with someone, it can cause mental illness, your own mental illness. It can bring on. I, I say this from watching and experiencing unforgiveness on a daily basis. And I see what happens as the unforgiveness grows deeper. The, the mental part becomes distorted. Our thinking becomes distorted. We, we assume things that aren't really there. We, we project things that aren't really there. We, we just build this, this whole thing. And, and as the brain starts to think that way, the body starts to respond that way. And so you get this perpetual physical decline, mental decline. And, and it, it affects your entire life. And when you don't forgive and walk in true forgiveness, letting it go, let the past die and be gone. It doesn't mean, like you say, it doesn't mean that we, we weren't hurt. It doesn't mean that we agreed with what happened to us. It doesn't mean that, um, we have to participate with that every day. It doesn't mean those things. It just simply comes down to you no longer hold that person accountable for that situation any longer. And you let it go in the, the past and not dwell on it because bitterness will rot you. And it will pour out its effect on all those around you. So if you're carrying unforgiveness in any form, you're setting yourself up for big failure. So I learned this when, um, years and years ago, I had to learn to forgive my father who was very abusive. Very abusive. And, um, so I had to learn this at a very young age or I would've died a long time ago. I wouldn't have been able to survive to the age I am now. So just saying.
You know, that's really good.
I always remember, because it sticks in my head because it's so easy to remember. But unforgiveness is like drinking poison and expecting the other guy to die. That's what it is. You're gonna die.
Yeah.
He's not even gonna know you didn't like him.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, my, I've experienced too that you say, "Oh, I've forgiven that person," but you keep dredging it up. That's really not.
And that's the enemy.
And sometimes you have to tell yourself, "I forgive. I forgive, I forgive." And then, and just, and you can't, and then until you start believing in yourself. You know, it takes a while sometimes. You, I choose to forgive. I chose to forgive that person. I no longer hold them accountable. I am moving on. And every time it comes up, if it stimulates that old feeling, you haven't forgiven. So you go back and say, "I choose to forgive." It's choosing. We choose to love. We choose to forgive. We choose God. You know, it's, it's a choice.
It's not a feeling, it's an act of your will.
Exactly. Exactly.
Somebody wanna read number four?
Commitment to faith. Make a.
Conscience.
Conscience decision to trust and follow the Lord. Commit to living according to the principles and the teachings of your faith. Matthew 18, 18, verse 2 and 4. He called a little child to him and placed the child among them. And he said, "Truly I tell you, unless you change or become like a little children, you will never enter the kingdom of heaven. Before you whoever takes the lowly, lowly position of this child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven."
What does this mean? Somebody wanna break this down?
Well, uh, little, well, just think of little children that have like magical thinking. Like we adults, we're, we're educated, we have experience, so we're more apprehensive. We question a lot of things. This is what I'm thinking, my interpretation is. But as a child, you have that innocent. You have that innocent nature. And, um, so when we're receiving, uh, the faith or the principles and teachings of the faith, it's like we're eating it up because we're, 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 we're just like.
It's like a sponge.
Yeah, exactly. Like a sponge. We're like, wow. Wow, and it's the innocence that comes with that. And so we have, you know, as we get older, we, we have that intellect. And we think about science and, and question everything. But children, yes, they do question some things, but they're, they're so absorbed. And the teacher, they have that respect. So whatever that teacher say is like law or truth. So it's like coming into like, as, as adults, we have to kinda let go and, uh, just have that trust and that belief in that faith. Not that we're.
Yeah, I mean, you did, that's good.
Okay.
Trust is the word, that's it.
Yeah, that trust, yes.
That's what the child is doing. Innocently trusting is just precious.
So we see that's important. And the little bullet under that sentence passage emphasizes humility and the need to adopt a childlike attitude to enter the kingdom of heaven. So humility and letting go.
And also a child is under authority. And we need to be under a sword.
Good point. Explain it.
Well, a child, a child has to obey his parents or he's always in trouble.
Yeah.
That's why so many kids run away when they're five years old.
Five-year-olds, they know everything.
That's it. Okay, so humility and letting go. Acknowledge that you cannot control everything and that you need divine guidance. Let go of your ego, your pride, and the need to be in control. That's hard. That can be hard, you know? The Bible provides extensive guidance on the virtues of humility and the concept of letting go. These principles are foundational to Christian living and discussed throughout the Old and New Testament. And so here's some key passages, uh, related to letting go. So God, uh, in James 4:6, "God opposes the proud, but he gives us more grace." That is why the scripture says, "God opposes the proud, but shows favor, favor to the humble." This passage highlights that humility attracts God's grace while pride is met with opposition. Now who do we know that the Bible talks about who was full of pride?
Pharaoh.
Pharaoh.
Pharaoh, well, Herod. He was full of pride and look what happened to him.
Yeah. And who, who's the number one pride?
Satan.
Satan. Valerie, can, can I say something?
Yeah.
You commented that, that it's hard to let go of our ego, pride, and the need to be controlled. It is hard because the.
It is hard, because it goes against our nature. We want what we want when we want it, like any two-year-old, right? And the thing is, is God isn't... It's also hard, because God isn't just asking us to let go of our ego, pride, and need to be controlled. He's asking us to repent of our sins. He's asking us to forgive that person that wrongs us over and over and over again. He only wants everything.
Yeah.
And it's hard.
Yeah, that's right. He only wants everything, and it's hard.
Okay, now, we're gonna take a huge leap, because I'm looking at the clock. So we are going to flip over to page eight. And we'll come back if we have time left, but you got the notes, so.
I'm liking these notes.
Good.
Thank you, Valerie.
I hope everybody has a notebook, so you can just kind of go back. Because even though I'm facilitating this, I go back all the time to look. So, yeah, so, okay, at the top of page eight, it says, "Perform random acts of kindness." This is included in things that we can do, practical steps, that we can take, this starts on page seven. It's giving you practical steps and things that you can do to be closer to the Lord, okay? And so we talked about abiding, and so now we're gonna see a video on obedience, how to obey God's Word completely. And so, let me go to that real quick. Can you get the light for somebody on that side, once I get it?
Hey, everybody, Pastor Stan YouTube channel. Good to have you with us again. We're gonna do some more Bible teaching today. And today, we're gonna look at, what did Jesus say about obedience? And also, how am I supposed to obey God and not live in continual defeat, but instead, live the best life possible and have the victory? All right, so if you're learning how to live the best life possible on this channel, and you'd like to like and subscribe, give those, do so as well. That would be great, we would appreciate that. Let's get the word out. All right, let's go ahead and start with our study today. First of all, what did Jesus say about obedience? What did he say about obedience? Well, I just happen to have it right here in the Bible. Let's take a look at it, John chapter 14 and verse 15. Now, here's what Jesus said about obedience. Very simple, really. "If you love me, obey my commandments." That's what Jesus said. "If you love me, obey my commandments." Now, here's the thing I've noticed about obedience. Again, I wanna live the best life possible, so I don't wanna live continuously in guilt and self-condemnation and failure, because, you know, the Bible's got all these commandments, and Jesus said all these things, and I'm trying to do them, and I'm failing all the time. What kind of a life is that? Well, there's a couple things that I need to realize about myself. First of all, no one obeys perfectly. I'm just gonna tell you. We can try to obey everything that Jesus said, and we're gonna live a life of failure. If I keep thinking about that, and I have to score, right, of how many times I've failed, well, what kind of a life is that? So there must be a better way. Jesus would not have given us His commandments if it wasn't possible for us to obey Him and have the victory, even when we fail. So here's what I've learned. I've learned that trying to obey is obeying. Trying to obey is obeying. I try to obey what it says, and I fall short. I keep trying, I keep trying to obey, keep following the Lord, keep trying to obey. And yes, I have some fears, and I come to a conclusion that I really can't obey what Jesus said unless God helps me do it. Unless I have God's help, I just cannot do it. Well, that's the good news today. The good news is, the Holy Spirit will help me do that very thing, because it is God's will for me to obey the commandments of Jesus. So let's take a look at what it says. Romans chapter 8, verse 26 in Paul. Here's what the apostle Paul says about the Holy Spirit's help in our lives. Here's what Paul says. "And the Holy Spirit helps us in our weaknesses. For example, we don't know what God wants us to pray for, but the Holy Spirit prays for us with groans that cannot be expressed in words. And the Father, who knows all hearts, knows what the Spirit is saying, for the Spirit pleads for us believers in harmony with God's own will." So yes, I may be, I say, oh, you know, oh, I love Jesus, so I'm gonna obey His commandments. Then I get mad at this person, and then I'm upset about that. At the end of the day, I can think, well, I certainly failed on that, didn't hardly obey the Lord at all. And I can be mad at myself, I can be filled with guilt. But the Lord says, hey, wait a minute, the Holy Spirit's helping you, helping you obey the Lord. So the intention of my heart is what I really want to point to. My heart wants to do what is right. I wanna do what's right. I may fail, but I keep wanting to do what is right, and the Holy Spirit helps me day by day by day, do better and better. And so instead of focusing on everything I'm failing on, I'm focusing on the Lord helping me and having a victory, and a victory, and a victory. Now I start counting the victories, counting my blessings, if you will. Yay! And I feel so much better, because I know that I'm making progress. My life turned from defeat into victory. And all of a sudden, I'm thinking, Pastor Stan was right. I'm starting to live the best life possible, because of having the victory, following the commandments of Jesus. Yes, I'm learning how to obey Jesus, and I'm learning how to have the victory. Well, what's the result of trying? I know what Jesus said, I love Jesus, I am trying, I believe the Holy Spirit's helping me. Well, here's what Jesus says Himself about when we are obeying or trying to obey. Here it is, Luke chapter 6, verse 46 in Paul. Jesus says, "So why do you keep calling me Lord and Lord when you don't do what I say?" He said, "I'll show you what it's like when someone comes to me, listens to my teachings, and then follows it. It's like a person building a house who digs deep and lays the foundation on solid rock. When the floodwaters rise and break against that house, it stands firm, because it is well-built. But anyone who hears and doesn't obey is like a person who builds a house right on the ground, without a foundation. When the floods sweep down against that house, it will collapse in a heap of ruins." That's the result. So if I can approach the commandments of Jesus, the commandments of the Bible, with this kind of attitude, that it is in the trying that I have success, because here I am, and here's the Lord. So I move towards the Lord, and I'm trying, guess what the Lord does? He doesn't move away. If I move towards the Lord, He moves towards me. Just like that, just like that. Closer and closer, I keep trying, keep trying, keep trying. The Holy Spirit helps me be successful. And the closer I am to the Lord, the easier it is for me to have victory over the challenges I face. And next thing you know, I'm living the best life possible, because I have learned how to obey God. All right, my friends, it's been good to be with you on the Pastor Stan YouTube channel. As always, this has been a blessing to you, and if you've learned how, you're learning how to live the best life possible, then please like and subscribe. Let's get the word out there, let's help some folks also learn how to have the victory. All right, we'll talk to you next time.
Any comments?
Yes. I appreciate that he said, trying to obey is obeying. I appreciate that.
Trying, at least you're putting forth an effort.
Yeah, it takes a huge heaviness off of that failure, but you're trying, you know?
Verse 46? Are you writing, did you write down the scripture again?
Was it Luke, what was Luke? I know it was Luke.
Luke chapter 6, but what verse?
Verse 46?
I don't have it in my notes.
I thought he said 46.
46?
Did you get it?
You can always go to YouTube.
You know, when we're growing up as children, and our parents start telling us stuff to do, right away, we don't get it, you know? And I think it's the same way when you're trying to obey God. You know, you don't get it right at first. But the more that you obey your parents, it's kind of like the happier you are. That was with me anyhow. When I could make my mother and dad happy, I was happy. You know, and I think that that's the kind of relationship that God wants us to have with Him. We're trying to make Him happy, but I like what Lorraine said. You know, we're trying to obey, and like he said, it doesn't always happen. You know, we slip up. Not that we do great big things, you know, I'm not talking, you know, but we do little things in our life that we shouldn't do. You know, maybe pride or whatever it might be. But, you know, we just need to realize that it's a work in progress. It's not something that happens overnight. And, but the more... It's kind of like when a horse is a Mustang, and you break it, and then you start riding it. And I used to ride a lot when I was younger. And horses really do like to be ridden, and they like to do what you, you know, and they like to please you, you know, they really do. And that's the way that God wants us to have, is that relationship. He's trying to tame us, you know, and get us out of this world that we've been living in and realize that He's the one that needs to be the one that we come to with everything. And when we obey His laws, we're happy, you know, and He's happy with us. But, you know, He has an unconditional love for us, just like our folks did. And He's gonna forgive us if we ask for forgiveness, because, you know, I can remember asking my mother or my dad to forgive me for something that I did, and they, right away, gave me a hug and said, yes, let's try not to do it again, but, you know, I still love you. And that's what God's like. He still loves us, no matter how much we, you know, think that we're not doing what we should. He still loves us. Just we need to continue to lean into Him, that's all we can do.
Well, one thing that I do know, we will always make mistakes, and we always fall short. But the good thing about being born again is that those who are in Him can always go, just like what the Scripture says in John 1:9. If you ask for forgiveness, He's faithful to do it. Just as long as you're sincere in your heart about repenting, asking Him to, you know, give you another chance. But for those who deliberately sin with the idea of that after I do this, then I'll ask God to forgive me, that's not true repentance. That's premeditated. So it's a difference. So since we are short on time, we're gonna skip all the way to... Because this is a part that's really important. I think it's very last. Yes, the last, it's page nine, actually. Start from page.
Page nine.
So at the bottom, where it says, "The daily discipline." The Scripture showed that Jesus established patterns that enabled Him to maintain a special love relationship without sleep. He was alone, or when He was away from other people. And so we should feel even greater need if Jesus needed regular communication with the Father. We need regular communication as well. So in Mark 1:35, it says, "And early in the morning, when it was still dark, Jesus got up, left the house, and went away to a secluded place and prayed there for a time." So this is how we can have an effective quiet time. So what were the key words that I gave you this morning? About distractions. What do you do if you got distractions? You got distractions. Remember I said you got, you learn your distraction, you know what your distraction is? And if you have a hard time getting away from that distraction, what do you do?
Make a plan.
No, do something different.
Make a plan.
Make a plan.
What's first?
Pray.
Lord, this is my problem, help me. Remember, that's key, yes. That is key, because if you don't do that, you're gonna keep having the distraction. You're gonna be like a wheel stuck in the mud going round and around. And you wanna put a stop to that. And the way you put a stop to it is through prayer. Okay, and then after that, is being deliberate. You're being deliberate about beating this battle against the enemy for your time with the Lord. That's what it is, it's a war. This is an all-out war. Okay, and then you need to schedule a daily time from your day to meet with Christ. You wanna read, you wanna study, meditate, and you wanna put application to it. That's key. Because if you do all those things, and you don't apply it to your own life, then all of that's in vain. And so you need your tools. Okay, and then if you flip over to page 10, make sure you find a place to be alone with Christ, no phone, no television, or other distractions. If other people live with you, make sure you let them know that you're getting ready for your personal devotions, and you don't wanna be interrupted from the timeframe that you give them. And if you live in a house with someone, I think they, if you give them a timeframe, okay, you know, don't bother me for the next hour, or don't bother me for the next 30 minutes. You know? Then they'll know, and they'll get used to you saying that. Oh, she's doing her quiet time. She get a phone call, oh, she's doing her fine, they, don't mess with her.
I like that.
So these are some ideas, okay, like a regular quiet time. Finding a regular quiet time is the key to being effective. And having your quiet time in the morning begins your day with the recognition of your dependence on God and His sufficiency. It gives you an opportunity to yield your will to Him and consciously dedicate the day to His glory. So what time do you usually get up in the morning? For a lot of us, this is, it's gonna be a serious battle, 'cause I know people that don't like to get up until after 9:00. I mean, 'cause I have neighbors, they literally don't go to bed till 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. And so they sleep in. They're retired, they can do what they want, you know? Me, I'm an early, I usually get up early. So whatever works for you, you might have to try different things, you know? Because at one time, I thought, I'll just do my devotions in the evening. Well, that didn't work, that wasn't good, because I was getting tired and sleepy, and I didn't have the focus. In the morning time, I have a better focus.
You start your day off right when you do that, too.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm not trying to tell anybody what time of day to do your devotions. You gotta work, do what works for you. And so finding a place is important. The second requirement for effective quiet time is finding a place where you can be alone with God. And Matthew 6:6 describes how Jesus encourages his followers to pray. Most people find that they can concentrate best when they have an established place away from noise, distractions, and other people. A place where they can focus on one to whom they're praying to. And then, I just listed some ideas that you can do. Like me, I love to set the atmosphere with praise and worship.
But I can't have words on. I can only have instrument, because if I have words that I'm singing and not reading...
But that's fine, no, you're not doing this.
Now, if I wanna sing, you know, then I put on the words, but I find Christians instrumental.
Yeah, what I do is I just kind of like put the praise and worship music on, and I sit in a chair for a minute, just with my eyes closed. And then, when I get ready to really get into the Word, I have a whole playlist of instrumental Christian music. It's just instrumental, it's just background. I just have it down on my phone. Now, that's just me, you gotta do what worship do. And then I start, you know, you can read through the Bible. There's a difference between reading the Scripture and studying the Scripture. Remember when we did the Bible? Remember when we did the Bible mapping? Okay, that's studying. You get into studying with that. Reading through is just to get a general idea of what's going on. But then there's words and things in there that you might not understand. That's when you stop, and you start looking stuff up. That's when you start getting into time. When you start getting into, where it used to be 15 minutes of reading, now you want to like, what exactly did they mean? And then you start looking stuff up. Then the 30 minutes turns into an hour, and an hour can very easily go into two hours. So, and then, you know, the word study, like the Bible mapping like we did, and then memorizing or reviewing memory verses. And then, most of us have prayer lists, and you can do your prayer list. So there's different ways you can have your morning devotion. But at least you need to get into the Word. And so that is the end of our nine and 10.
Thank you, Valerie. It's been awesome. So what are you doing the next one?